So I'm gonna. Whoops. Anybody wish to provide comments to our city council? About anybody joining us virtually? Going once, going twice. Okay, let's move on to the minutes. You've all had an opportunity to review the minutes from our May twenty seventh meeting. And if there's no corrections to the minutes, I'd accept the motion to approve them.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to approve our minutes from our May twenty seven city council meeting. All in favor say aye.
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 Posnay. Thank you. Approved.
Mark.
Yes, Mark, go ahead.
Did you hear me? I was just gonna make one comment, uh, since I did read them extensively since I wasn't there. Uh, council member La Bar's name was not mentioned in the beginning of the minutes, so we may want to just add that whether she was absent or present.
Okay, good catch. Thanks. Get that. Okay, let's move on. Item F. This is vouchers and payroll. Cindy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, our total vouchers are one million, two hundred fourteen thousand, three hundred eighty dollars and thirty-three cents. That is made up of um, regular expenditures of one million, one hundred eighty thousand, six hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-three cents. And our other payables of thirty-three thousand, seven hundred forty-six dollars and forty cents. And our May payroll was one million, two hundred twenty-one thousand, four hundred seventy-four dollars and seventy cents.
Your Honor, the Finance Committee reviewed these items and I would move approval.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve vouchers and payroll as presented. Any questions for Cindy? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posnay.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Cindy. Vouchers and payroll approved. Uh, we did not have any claims for damages and you can see the small contracts that I approved. One was executive services for the Aquatic Center and then the fire grants expert safer application. Thank you, Chief Jenkins. We have a couple of information items. So before we get started, I want to read a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor, City of Cheney. Proclamation, whereas Eastern Washington University founded in eighteen eighty-two has served as a vital institution of higher education for the inland Northwest, preparing generations of students for meaningful careers, civic leadership and a lifetime lifelong learning. And whereas the City of Cheney is proud to be home to Eastern Washington University and shares a deep and enduring partnership with the university, its students, faculty, staff and alumni. And whereas the week of June ninth through the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five marks the time of celebration for Eastern Washington University graduates who have worked with dedication and perseverance to achieve their academic goals. And whereas commencement week is a special opportunity to honor the accomplishments of these graduates, many of whom will go on to shape our communities, state and nation as leaders and changemakers. And whereas the City of Cheney recognizes the importance of celebrating these achievements and showing our collective pride in the success of Eastern Washington University students and the legacy of the institution. Now therefore, I, Chris Grover, Mayor of the City of Cheney, do hereby hereby proclaim the week of June ninth through the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five as Eagle Grad Week in the City of Cheney and encourage all residents, businesses and community members to join in celebrating Eastern Washington University's graduating class of twenty twenty-five. Let us show our eagle pride and support these new graduates as they take flight into their next chapter. And I'd like to also, yes. And I'd like to invite Dr. Sherry McMahon. If you have a few words, ma'am, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. On behalf of Eastern Washington University, Kelsey and I, Kelsey's our director of alumni relations. You see a lot of Kelsey around town. Want to thank the City of Cheney for this proclamation and for your partnership in celebrating EWU Grad Week. Each spring, our campus is filled with so much joy as our graduates put across the stage, ready to enter the workforce or pursue graduate studies. More importantly, make meaningful contributions to our communities. This milestone reflects years of perseverance, hopefully not too many years, but years, learning and personal growth. As you know, this year is especially meaningful because for the first time in several years, we are returning commencement to Cheney.
Yes.
We began this celebration in May with the graduates from our cultural science and public health. Just as a reminder, uh, EWU has both semester and quarter. And so that's why we already had one class graduate in May and now we're gonna finish up. Uh, we'll have, uh, six ceremonies over the course of Friday and Saturday, all day, all that you think, uh, on both days to honor our graduates and the thousands of visitors with them. So we are unlimited in our tickets and they can fill Rees Auditorium, uh, at every, every ceremony if they like. I encourage them to come back. So to all of the Cheney community, we're very grateful and you were all making a lasting impression on our students. Whether it's welcoming to your businesses, um, whether it's providing them job or internship opportunities, cheering them on at Bruce Field on a Saturday or helping them grow sense. So thank you to our, our policemen um, as they grow into young adults. So you help our students feel like they belong and that is all that matters. So again, commencement is not just an academic celebration. It's really a community celebration. So thank you for celebrating this milestone with us.
Thank you, Dr. McMahon. A little quick pick here.
All right. Everybody get in there. Okay, on the count of three, we're gonna say go eat. One, two, three.
Go eat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
What a treat to have you guys here. Thank you so much. Okay, another special event. Come on up, Officer Darren Holter. Here we go. We're gonna swear in a newest police officer.
He is a, he is a lateral police department. Uh, he spent eight and a half years there. Working for them. He is now one of our members started in April and he is just go headfirst into our community policing model and quickly becoming another positive face for our department. And he is one of the nicest human beings I've ever met. So I think my guys can attest to that. So, uh, just wanted to introduce you guys to him. This is me today. So.
Thank you. Welcome.
For everybody.
Hi Darren Holter. Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the City of Cheney.
City of Cheney.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
The best plan of.
Officer Holter.
Yes, assign first.
Yeah, welcome aboard. Hey, congrats. Congrats.
Welcome aboard. If I drive a red pickup, red cherry pickup.
I'm sure they have a picture of what happened.
Just cleared, cleared out the room here.
That's it.
See it. Yeah, there goes half the room. All right, let's move on to our action items. The first one, uh, Mr. Ableman is Resolution F three seventy-three, the Elm Street Preservation Project Supplemental Engineering Agreement.
This was brought back from last council meeting, recall. There was kind of an error on, there was an error on the, on the actual agreement. The original agreement was designed in one hundred thousand and we're asking for a vision of six thousand, uh, which includes a little bit more of the whole health design and also, uh, partnering with STA in there. So that was the additional design and then the other additions was supplemental construction and then, uh, one fifty-seven support. And then the subconsult cost, which is basically butt injured to do all the testing. I'll just back in proper form on behalf of Eastern Washington.
Thanks, Todd. Anybody have questions for Todd on this supplemental agreement?
Todd, this is pretty routine. We do this all the time and it's, is it ninety percent TIB paid?
That is correct. Ninety percent the TIB funded. Uh, as you recall, we opened up, we were approximately six thousand.
Yeah.
So, uh, it was a little scary going one bitter, but.
I'll move for approval, Resolution F three seven three. Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution F three seventy-three, the Elm Street Preservation Project Supplement, supplemental engineering agreement. Any final comments or questions for Todd? Mark, Jackie? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posnay. Thank you, Todd. Resolution F three seventy-three passes. Cindy, Resolution F three seventy-five. This is the FEMA funding agreements.
The last part of our response and our assistance. Uh, so we now have to sign this agreement with the Washington Military Department. FEMA comes down through that. It's first that way. So once it's assigned, I'll contact them. We're gonna have to fill out these forms and then we'll get our reimbursement for FEMA for our assistance in that, in that event. So I'm asking for approval of Resolutions F three seventy-five.
Thank you, Cindy. Any questions for Cindy on this agreement to receive money?
If there are no questions, I would move for approval of F three seventy-five.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution F three seventy-five FEMA funding agreements. Any follow-up questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Posnay. Thank you, Cindy. Resolution F three seventy-five passes. Still left with Resolution F three seventy-six, the arbitrage monitoring and compliance.
That means that debt and make money off that. We can't issue debt, go invested and make money off of that. So we, we have issued our two series of general obligation bonds. Uh, Bond Council has suggested that we um, contract with an arbitrage, arbitrage company to monitor that for us. This particular company, BLX Group, um, Spokane County has a master contract with them and we are allowed to be back off that. And so we get a much more reasonable price than if we were to go out on our own. Um, it's a little over, I think, a thousand dollars to do our initial analysis and then every three years down another three, four dollars them to update that. Um, the majority of this initial happened in October and they will take all of our information and kind of give us in their books and they'll touch base with us every year just to make sure everything's still going well. And then every three years they'll give us an official notification. So they, they will just monitor to make sure there is no arbitrage asked.
Thank you, Cindy. Any questions for Cindy on this agreement?
This was brought up in finance. I think it's a good idea because this stuff gets pretty wonky. If I need someone to tell you, we, we did everything right and didn't make a pile of money on the bomb. Makes life easier later for Cindy.
Sure.
So I'm game. I'll make motion to approve Resolution F three seven six.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution F three seventy-six, the arbitrage monitoring and compliance. Any follow-up comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Posnay. Thank you, Cindy. Resolution F three seventy-six passes and Resolution F three seventy-seven, a very short temporary custodial contract.
So this is kind of the full-time employee custodial at our city facilities. That person is on, uh, has been on leave and will be on leave probably through the end of summer work period. Uh, given that, we have no custodial in any of our buildings. Um, we have events that go on, have employees. The Red Cross Community Center has triathlon gear. Um, and so as this was trying to be determined, the mayor took charge of this, of this project, went out and got a few, had people come walk through and then has decided to contract on a short-term basis with this company to provide our cantorial. Um, we have already signed these contracts because that is already starting. So I'm asking for your review after the fact, so speak. I know we don't typically do that, but we were kind of in that situation where custodial needed to start happening, you know. So I'm asking for your approval of Resolution F three seven.
Thank you, Cindy. Questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, just one. If in the case that this happens again, would this help expedite so we don't have a, a gap in the future?
I think so. I think that'd be
Yeah.
On short term. Have a, if this happens and there's a long period of time. I mean, in this case, I don't know any carry to speak to what will happen. I mean, at some point, you know, we'll either get our employee back or we won't. And if, and if we don't, then this means we have to make the termination. We might go back to the employee or we might go to the service. That, that kind of fascinating.
In this short period of time, we'll get an opportunity to see the performance of the contract, of the, the company and and we can kind of weigh the costs and be, and see what's appropriate going forward.
We also discussed this a bit in finance and, uh, it's almost like an emergency of sorts. Um, I'm sure it felt like it for the people who were trying to get by. So I would move for a resolution, for the passage of Resolution F three seventy-seven.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to pass Resolution F three seventy-seven, a temporary custodial contract. Any questions? Does it have any follow-ups? Mark, Jackie? All in favor, say aye.
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 Posnay? I said it. Resolution F three seventy-seven passes. On your backup, Resolution F three seventy-eight, well, one pump replacement project.
Especially pumped in the amount of three thousand. To take a look at our well, we, we did purchase a, a brand new well, so we're gonna have to finally bash it and pull it out, reassess it.
You shut me off? Uh, so well, one, uh, is, is starting to lose a little bit of production. Uh, we're afraid that if we shut it off, we may not get it back. Uh, current situation right now, we're gonna leave it running until we see, uh, uh, until we have to get in there. Uh, but the whole idea is to have, uh, one pump pulled and one pump replaced within, uh, basically two days. So that's kind of the mode of operation. So this contract will allow especially pump to get in there when we're ready, uh, to, uh, take a look at well one. In addition, we are looking at raising that pump bottom up ten feet. We believe that there's some restriction in the bottom of that that has taken our pump because this is the third time we've been in well one. Uh, if this probably happens again, then we may have to go to more of a subversible pump to try to figure out the long-term of, of well one. But I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Todd. Any questions for Todd on the, this replacement?
So this was, we planned for this in the twenty twenty-five budget.
That is correct. We, we plan for about ninety thousand and for well rehabs. Uh, we try to plan the, the, the next one and, and I think right now we are focusing on well seven. It's been a while out there. Uh, but with, with this, with, uh, even with this budget, we will probably have, uh, enough money to maybe take a look at well seven.
So the purchase of the pump along with the labor to install is within the ninety?
Yeah, it's, it's roughly probably just, uh, a little over forty.
Yeah, we need the water. So you're gonna wait till September or until it goes down?
Uh, if we start losing production and we know that well, uh, probably can, uh, produce upwards between five fifty and six hundred. Currently, Dan, we're down to four, four twenty. And so, but with the hot weather, if we get a break in the weather and we're taking a look at our reservoirs and we can kind of get it in there, that's probably the mode where we're gonna take a look at.
Let's do it.
We need the water. Make a motion, Your Honor, to approve F three seventy-eight.
I'll second that one.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution F three seventy-eight, well, one pump replacement project. Uh, Mark, you had your hand up?
Yeah, just a quick question. Um, Todd, how much does the new pump cost?
I think the, the new pump that we purchased, the provider was just a little over seventeen thousand.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? I do have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Todd. Resolution F three seventy-eight passes. Uh, Aquatics, Todd, you're doing this one too. The Aquatic Center Gift Agreements, Resolution F three seventy-nine. This is, this is a really cool one.
This, this one is, uh, and I, I've got to, uh, give kudos out to Dan Curley. I, I think he's probably, uh, I know he's on, on probably listening as much as he can and he's been going to, uh, do presentations around the region, uh, really campaigning this, this effort. Um, tonight, and I, I don't believe we're done yet, but tonight these three agreements total, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand over a five-year con, five-year period. Uh, with Providence, uh, taking control or, or actually naming the community center and then the other two of Moser and of Holiday, uh, each representing one of the, uh, one of the slides. So, uh, as as a pool gets developed, as we start seeing that final product, hopefully we can get more interest in, in these same type of agreements. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Todd. I can add a little bit to this because it's a really cool story. So the, the dual slides. So Chris Holiday from Holiday Heating. And I think it's Eric Moser, right? Eric Moser from Moser. Corey, that's right, Corey. Um, they were friends growing up and they used to ride their bikes to the pool, the old pool together. And now they both own businesses and they both are sponsoring each of the slides right next to each other. So that's just a cool story. Yeah, good for those guys. Anyway, sorry. Any questions for Todd on these gifts?
Second. Oh, I'll move for uh, passage of Resolution F three eight zero.
Three seven nine.
Three seven zero?
Three seven nine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Three seven nine?
Yeah, that one too. We'll do three, seven, nine. I apologize.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution F three seventy-nine, the Aquatic Center Gift Agreements. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. Thank you, Todd. Resolution F three seventy-nine passes. Hope and there's more coming. At least I'll be asking. Okay, Reso, Cindy, I think, right? For the outreach. Uh, who's doing the Cheney Outreach Agreement? Steve. Oh, yeah. Sorry, Steve. This is for electrical, uh, Resolution F three eighty, the Cheney Outreach Agreement.
Uh, good evening. Seeking approval of the new Cheney Ecumenical Outreach Ministry's Agreement. The initial one was from nineteen ninety, so it's been a thirty-five year partnership. It has, uh, provided a lot of assistance for utilities within the city. I thought it was important to rewrite this agreement to be in, in conformance with the Clean Energy Transformation Act. That act requires the city or all the utilities to have at least two low-income programs. And to qualify as a, a program, section five was added to where they define low income as a household with income not exceeding the higher of eighty percent of the area median income or two hundred percent of the federal poverty level adjusted for household size for Spokane County. So we just, uh, this agreement to be compliant, but flexible toward to whom we want. It doesn't restrict them on giving funds to other people that don't follow these guidelines. But whoever falls in this guideline will count as credit towards the city as a viable program. Uh, is there any questions?
Thanks, Steve. Any questions for Steve on renewing this long time agreement?
Your Honor, this was a subject part of the Public Works Committee a few weeks ago and it's a needed uh, element that we have to have and I appreciate Steve's work in getting this again renewed so that we can qualify to help with the energy assistance. They already did one on this one, didn't they? Three eight zero for approval?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution F three eight zero, the agreement with Genie Outreach. Any follow-up questions or comments? If there's none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Posnay. Thank you, Todd, or Steve. Resolution F three eighty passes.
Thank you.
We have one more, Todd. Resolution F three eighty-one. This is the Wash Dot Agreement for Crosswalk Lighting.
Across, yeah. This has been a long time coming, uh, trying to work with them, trying to even find, uh, funding, but, uh, DOT, they had some extra money, I think, on a study over in Four Lakes, but it was tied to nine oh four at that time. Uh, they, they asked to reappropriate some of this money and take a, a longer look down nine oh four. Uh, so we started the discussion and that was crosswalk safety. There's two locations that, that are, are in dire need. Uh, one at College Hill and nine oh four, which one of these, uh, rapid flashing beacons will be installed with the city's uh, uh, forces. That was, uh, an agreement, uh, that they would give us those and we would install them. Plus, we could actually capture some, uh, money, city costs if we get that done before June thirtieth of this year. So we're working with the light department. We have to uh, move a, a street light and then we're probably gonna ask them to kind of help us out on the install of these, these systems. Um, there was two purchased and with the idea that we would look over at, um, basically SR nine oh four and Simpson Parkway, but they were also reallocated a larger chunk of money. And they are going to take on the design and the installation of a, of a bigger crosswalk at that area, which we typically would call a hawk system. It is a push button red light, uh, for pedestrian safety there. So we do have one extra rapid flashing beacon that we will take a look at anywhere from A Street down to College Street, uh, to that end. So this agreement is just allowing us uh, to get reimbursed for any expenses that we occur through June thirtieth. That I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Todd. Yeah, we've been, uh, we've been talking to Wash Dot for years on this. So it's really cool that they've got some money to, to, to help us out. Thanks, Todd. Any questions for Todd on this? Much-needed amenity.
If no one has any questions, Your Honor, I would move for the passage of Resolution F three eighty-one.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution F three eighty-one, the Agreement for Crosswalk Lighting from Wash Dot. Any follow-up questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right, there's no nays. Thank you, Todd. Resolution F three eighty-one passes. Got through that one pretty quick, huh? Um, okay, so that concludes our action items. Um, I don't know, do we have any staff reports to, Todd, do you want any updates on the pool right now? I know we want to do that real quick and.
We are, uh, working with, with, with Walker right now and they are, are putting, uh, some forces there trying to get done. Uh, as of now, uh, we, we have scheduled a, a little bit of a, uh, a gathering on the eighteenth, uh, from, um, a special invite for possibly, uh, contributors, uh, but, uh, really the grand opening is still planning for, um, basically June twenty-eighth. So we'd like to, to take a look at that. Hopefully that is an accurate, uh, date. Uh, right now we've received, I, I believe forty-plus lifeguards that we brought in. I, I believe Kerry was something like that and, and, uh, majority of them, uh, do have lifeguard certifications, but we're working uh, right now with, uh, EWU Pool to, to get some of those, the training done and we'll probably work at REN to get some of our management uh, issues done on there until we can gain access to the actual physical building. When the building is, is pretty much ready to go with a temporary certificate of occupancy, we'll be getting in that building, having the training and doing that. So, um, all eyes are set on a grand opening on June twenty-eighth. Very nice. I'll be answering any questions.
They commission our hot water tank in?
I, I, yeah, I, I believe they have been. There's several components to that.
Thanks, Todd.
Grand opening of a hot water tank.
Thanks, Todd. Uh, so for my report, just wanna, um, let, this weekend's gonna be busy downtown. There's a, a dance on Saturday night. We're gonna have swoop down there for pictures for families and everything. So exciting to, to have all the students and their families downtown enjoying City of Cheney. Uh, council reports, Teresa.
Nothing. Thank you.
Oh.
It's nice to see Eastern here and, yeah, it's great to have graduation back. Yes, absolutely. And that's it. Thank you.
Uh, no Plan Commission this week. I'll be at SRTC and Public Works on Thursday. Uh, Jackie?
I'm gonna be gone.
Sorry, Jack.
Just gonna be gone for public. So I don't know if Danielle is our backup, if she'll be here or not, but.
We can reach out.
I sent a I had to send the thing to. I had to send the thing that, I think I sent a note to Miley.
We will reach out to her. Jackie.
I got opioid debatement council on Thursday.
Okay.
Yes, correct Thursday. So I'll have something new to add to that when we meet again in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thanks Jackie. Mark.
Yeah. Thanks everyone. Just like to say congratulations to all of the graduates at Eastern. Great accomplishment. And I also want to just little shout out to council member Nazaro for a healthy baby soon. And then I'll see everybody at Public Works on Thursday.
Thanks Mark. That concludes most of the action items, but we are going to go into a closed session and it's going to take a few minutes to get this set up because Mr. Posterman, there's B-Lock. You're gonna have to disconnect from this Zoom meeting and then re-link into the, the Zoom meeting that Shelley sent you. I'm gonna ask Mike. Probably just Mike, I think, to be in the closed session. Approximately ten minutes. So I'm gonna.
There will be no.
No action afterwards. We're just gonna, after the closed session, we'll come out and conclude the meeting. So I ask everybody, thank you all for being here, but I ask all to exit stage right. Hey Chief. We probably, if you need to do something, we can just talk. Yeah, why don't we just do that? Do, I don't want to extend the value of your time. I don't want you to. It's all relative, so. Okay, okay, give me ten or fifteen minutes. Okay, yeah, okay. Okay, we're back in the open public meeting. Move to adjourn. Second and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
He thought I got some mail for you.
So let me ask, is the, is our.